Appeal Subcommittee Hearing for January twentieth twenty is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID nineteen pandemic until April first, two thousand and twenty-two. This virtual hearing is being recorded via WebEx. In order to ensure that, to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearings as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, for those of you connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state your name and address first and then can provide your comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the irrelevant address is called. All the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. I'm Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, do we need to know if there are any deferrals?
Oh, I thought you were waiting for Mr. Robinson to reply.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I think with the small team, I see everybody. Hi, Eric. How are you?
I'm ready to go. I'm ready to go. Yay.
Hi, Madam Chair. Just a quick note, I'm having issues with my panelist button function. So Sam has been helping me just get people elevated to panelists just in case people have questions about that. Sorry.
Okay, and we'll give a couple of-
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock cases? If you could just give me the address if you are deferring or withdrawing. Hearing now, I'll call the first case, calling BOA one-two-three-five-five-seven-one, seven Cordist Street. This is to confirm, our existing single-family habitable area will be added to the basement level. In addition, will be added that the rear, a new roof deck will be constructed and accessed by a stair and a hatch. The violation is Article sixty-two, section thirty, point one, one zero, a rear yard on a shallow lot. Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, roof structure restriction. Article sixty-two, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-two, section eight, the building has excessive feet. And Article sixty-two, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Well, I'm Tim Shan. I'm the architect for the project. This is a single-family. We've had ISD come out and confirm that. And the job is, it's gonna be a gut rehab of a three-story masonry building. We're gonna add a roof of twenty-three-by-fifteen-foot roof deck accessed by a hatch and new stair. Currently, there's a basement now that's half-occupiable in the back. It's an office back there now. We'd like to do a two-story L addition at the back, which would be eight-by-seventeen. And that's it. That's it. We'll be putting a fire sprinkler system in. We're doing enough work where we need to do that and-
Did I notice that there was a deck that seemed to be abutting the rear lot line from the plot plan? Um, oh, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, that's a set. Yeah, that's, let me see. That may be drawn wrong. Let me see what I have. Yeah, that's, that plot plan's incorrect. We'll have to fix that. The stairs, actually, if you look at my plans, A1, the stairs run sideways. There's currently a small platform there. He may have drawn that because there's a common alley back there. If you look at my plans, the ground floor plan, yeah.
Okay, and what's the distance, the rear yard required and what are you proposing?
Let me open it up. Fifteen feet is required. You know, we're closer to, you know, we're at three feet to the back of the, you know, to the back of the deck stairs.
Okay, and talk to us about the basement occupancy?
Yeah, the basement occupancy will be a family. If you look at my plans, A1, the basement occupancy will be an office bedroom in the front. We've got two big windows there, so it'll meet the requirements, but they're gonna use that for an office. It's a small room and it'll just be overflow when they have family over, but it's gonna be utilized as an office. And we have, currently have, it's good ceiling height now at seven foot nine-and-a-half inches. We should stay close to that, you know, depending on floor finishes, but we'll have, we'll have a good seven-nine when we're finished.
And does it appear that there seems to be access, direct access to the basement from the street?
There is, yeah. There's a door that comes directly off of Cordist Street.
But there is no intention of that becoming a second unit in the basement or-
No, absolutely not. That door is for trash and, you know, moving stuff in and out. It's not a great door. It's one of the little small doors you see.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. Well, I have one question. I just wanted to make sure. So there's some other roof decks and you're holding the roof deck back from the street, which I think is great. It seems in line with one down a little bit. I just wanted to confirm that. There's no dimension on it, but it seems like it's pretty close to the-
I just kinda lined them up, yeah. When I measured, we'll be close to that.
Okay, no, no questions. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kaitlin Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office has received no opposition or comments from the abutters, so at this time, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Any sense if there was a community meeting held?
We did not have a community meeting because it's a single-family home.
Okay, okay.
I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? The BPDA is recommending approval, so may I have a motion?
You lost some people.
I probably should unmute myself. Sorry about that. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second, that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-four-three-two-nine-two, four Mount Vernon Street. This is an addition of one hundred and sixty-eight square feet on the third floor over an existing two-story rear L. An existing third story will be extended to add another bedroom to the house. The violation is Article sixty-two, section nineteen. This is in the neighborhood design overlay district. Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, roof structure restrictions. Article sixty-two, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article sixty-two, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, it's Tim Shan. I'm the architect for the project. This project is a two-family structure now. We were before the board three or four years ago with the prior owners to add a dormer and do some other things, a roof deck. This is to add one more bedroom. A growing family lives here in this upper unit and they need that fourth bedroom. The bedroom would be thirteen-nine-by-twelve-three. Currently, there's a roof deck, you know, where this bedroom's going to be, you know, on top of the second floor. That's it. It's pretty straightforward. Yeah, we're asking for one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. You know, we already are over on the FAR, so, you know, we have a few violations, but that's what we're looking for.
And so it's, the goal is just to add the bedroom that roof deck is existing?
Yes, the roof deck's already there. We'll obviously get rid of that.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good as well, no questions.
Is, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kaitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Again, our office received no opposition or comments from the abutters. We did not have community meeting for this project, but at this time, we'd like to defer to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I will also follow the BPDA recommendation and make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-six-four-seven-two-eight, eighty-six Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy from a single-family to a two-family, constructing rear dormer, interior partition wall framing, roof repair. The violation is Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, roof structure restrictions. Article sixty-two, section eight, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-two, section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article sixty-two, section eight, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
So the outlook, is anybody here representing eighty-six Washington Street in Ward Two?
They did check in. Let me-
There, I just hit the unmute, sorry. Little technical difficulties.
No issues. Put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Nestor Lemus, address is two thirty-five Marginal Street, Chelsea, Mass. And what we're proposing is to dormer the front roof in line with the streetscape and fully dormer the back with a deck and a headhouse. The current ridge, top of ridge is approximately forty-two and we're proposing an additional five-point-six for the headhouse for a total of forty-seven. We comply with the FAR going from twenty-eight, forty-five square feet to twenty-nine, fifty-three square feet. This will be an owner occupant and I am the owner representing myself.
Okay, um, well, I just wanna understand something because I think you probably represented that this was a front dormer. Is it a, because it's advertised as a rear dormer or, so is it both? Is it essentially a front and a rear dormer?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam Chairman. It's essentially both a front and a rear dormer.
Okay, and so you're gonna change the occupancy. Tell us how that change of occupancy is going to occur.
It will have separate utilities for all of the two units, electrical, gas and plumbing, with a comment for the back entry. And it's really an in-law for my mother that's gonna live downstairs and it has two forms of egress for each of the units from the rear and the front.
Okay, so, you know, we are very careful about basement units because, so talk to us about the floor-to-ceiling height in that unit, in unit one. Tell us about the floor-to-ceil height and tell us about egress, please.
The floor-to-ceiling height in that unit was in existing condition. It was approximately, I forget the numbers, slightly over eight feet. The forms of, this also has a sub-basement to that, so the two forms of egress is out through the back door and then down through the sub-basement through the hatch from the basement. And also, if needed, you can go upstairs through my unit.
Okay, so if these are supposed to be two separate units, they need separate means of, two means of egress, because just understand that, you know, the relief we grant is not because it's family, but we have to grant it for expecting that it might not be. So tell us about the floor-to-ceil height.
The floor-to-ceil height would be an additional eight inches from the top of the cell and forward approximately eight from the bottom of the cell.
Okay, so the, okay. And then tell us about the dormer that you're proposing to construct. How many square feet in total?
The dormer in the front would add an additional four. There is one dormer now that's approximately four feet and this would add approximately another six feet to the total dormer space additional with windows in the middle in the front.
Okay.
And in the rear, it would be approximately twenty-four feet wide by approximately ten feet with the setback having on the deck in the rear.
And so, and then what's the proposed height? Because it looks like you're essentially adding a separate story almost.
If you go to the next slide, a little further down, the other direction.
So it's before?
There, oh, yes, before, sorry. You'll see the, the top ridge, which is the existing condition, is at forty-two. Maybe one further up. And then with the headhouse, we're proposing an additional five-point-six for the completion of the headhouse.
So tell us about this headhouse.
The headhouse will start, because it's such a high ceiling, because the current roof is dormed, we're gonna give it eight-point-five ceiling height and then the roof dormer will start after the eight-point-five to nine and enter up into the deck space. So we're adding a total of new five-point-six of height to the top of the ridge, existing ridge board.
Okay, okay, got it. Mr. Robinson, I'm gonna let you go into the details about that basement, please.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I don't necessarily have any issue with the dormer or the extension. I think that's probably fair and fine. I mean, I guess I do have a slight issue with the basement unit only from the standpoint of, it is a full walkout, so that's good, but the bedroom windows, you know, they're, well, they're shown fixed on your plans, which obviously, I guess they shouldn't be, maybe they should be, but I think we need egress capacity for those, so that's an issue. But I guess I'm just wondering, you know, we do kinda have a little bit of an issue with below-grade bedrooms, although it is a full walkout. I was trying to figure out if maybe there's a way to reconfigure this a little bit to make the bedrooms work a little bit better with the grade dropping off, but I guess that's not really my job. But I think, you know, it's one of those sort of standard conditions. It's better than most just because it has the full walkout in the rear.
And we'll be adding a sprinkler system to the entire building, which would add, or the life safety protection to the space.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I look at the, the BPDA recommendations, because you're not proposing a roof deck, are you?
Yes, yes, in the rear, there would be a roof deck.
I see, okay, so-
It's sort of, it's sort of like a terrace cut into the roof. It's not-
Oh, I just thought it was, okay, so, because BPDA is recommending a headhouse, a hatch instead of a headhouse.
Yeah, I think they, yeah, I don't think they're seeing that quite correctly. I saw that on there too.
Yeah, so I too was having a hard time reading the plans.
It's sort of cut into the roof and it's an outdoor space, but in the roof plane is what I'm reading, so.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kaitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Any concerns by abutters were addressed and support was shown at the meeting, but at this time, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review and I think, I guess, if we can look at the layout and configuration, just make sure the egress windows and the full walkout are working. So I think that'll be a design review with BPDA.
Yeah, Mr. Robinson, I would say, I would second it.
And did you also wanna put a proviso with no building code relief?
Yes, sorry. Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
With a proviso with no building code relief. Thank you.
I'll second that motion as well.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso, okay?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You're welcome.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-six-three-one-one-four, thirty-four Sullivan Street. This is the modified plans to include a roof deck. Violation is Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, roof structure restriction. And Article sixty-two, section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lowe, thirty-two Cedarwood Road, Jamaica Plain. With me today is the applicant George Georges and the architect Steve Concilla. This is a project that's currently underway, changing from a three-family to a one-family. The applicant filed an amendment to add the roof deck to this project. Roof deck is ten by twelve feet. There is a roof hatch access. It is not seen from the public way. And we've had a butters meeting and we've also-
I just wanna confirm, so this is hatch access? It is hatch access?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no, no questions. It looks pretty straightforward and it's pulled back from the edge, so I don't, I don't see an issue with this.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kaitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. No abutters attended the meeting, but I did receive one letter of support and one letter of opposition. The opposition was due to noise, so at this time, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have three letters of support, one letter of opposition, but the opposition was the deck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. Alice, I sent a request to unmute you. Once you unmute, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Craft and Steven Spinetto at forty-two Sullivan Street.
Hey, go ahead.
Uh, we really are not comfortable with any more decks in the neighborhood. There already are way too many. That house is very high and we have a very small historic house. We think these decks are frankly dangerous because people put their barbecues, their grills on them, even though they know they're not supposed to. There's one directly across the street where the zoning board said to the owner, you know, you do understand that there are no, no grills supposed to be on this deck and literally the next day, those people had an enormous grill on top of, of their house, on their deck.
Have you called the fire department or ISD about that violation?
Yes.
It hasn't changed a thing.
Hasn't changed a thing. People still do it. We've had fires in this neighborhood, most notably on High Street because of grills that have been on decks and we've, we've lost several houses that had to be rebuilt, even ones that had sprinkler systems. So we're really not comfortable with having decks. This house has a perfectly good outdoor area. They can, they have plenty of outdoor space. There's no reason why there should be a deck on this house.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom, can you please have somebody go out from ISD when the weather's appropriate and, and check on that, that fire, the fire issue on the abutting house?
Oh, yeah, we can have an inspector look at the-
Yes, please. It might be worth doing a sweep in the community. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
No additional raised hands on my side, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Yeah, just one question. So is this a sole direct access from only the upper unit? Is this a private roof deck?
It's a single-family house. This was a legal three-family. I changed it to a single-family, so it's only, the only one egress from there, yes.
Okay, got it.
Some of the concerns that were brought up about-
No, we got, thank you. May I have a motion, Mr. Robinson?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second emotion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with, with the approval. And please remember, no, no fire hazards up there.
I will let the buyer know.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-four-zero-seven-four-two-sixty, Temple Street. This is adding a roof deck. The violation is Article eighteen, section one, front yard is insufficient. Article nineteen, section one, side yard is insufficient. And Article twenty, section one, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
David Govanlu, sixty, Temple Street, Boston. The owner, and this is my primary residence, my architect is also on the call. His name is Eric Zacherson.
And is this downtown Boston?
Yes, Beacon Hill.
Okay, so please tell us, Eric, please put your name and address on the record, Mr. Zacherson, and tell us what's being proposed.
Thank you. This is Eric Zacherson, one Loveau Street in Charlestown. The proposal is to add a roof deck. There is some historic record that there was one there a while ago, but hasn't been for a while. There is a existing headhouse and that would provide the access to, to this new head, to this new roof deck. Mr. Govanlu has worked with the Neighborhood Association, built a mock-up and, and shown it to Beacon Hill Historical and gotten their, yeah, their approval.
And what is the occupancy?
It's a single-family home.
It's a single-family, okay. Excellent. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. They're definitely using an existing headhouse and I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward in terms of what they're proposing.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. We held an abutters meeting on October eighteenth where the applicant addressed questions, concerns and concerns from neighbors and they also met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association and received their vote of non-opposition regarding this application. So yeah, I'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is the Chair members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor's Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. We do ask that the team continue working in good faith compromise with neighbors and, and on no lights shining on the deck when not in use and ratings that the BHCA finds consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the-
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I do have one letter of support, but I also, I don't know if you saw the BPDA's recommendation was the deferral.
Yes, but it seems like we have the complete set of plans, right?
Good.
Okay, yeah, so let's go ahead. What's your level of comfort, Mr. Robinson?
I'm fine. I think it's fine. I think it's consistent. I don't think there's an issue. I'll make a motion to support.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Or approve, I guess, not supportive, approve it. Thank you.
I too am, I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-five-nine-eight-four-nine-sixty-one-to-sixty-three, Berkeley Street. This is a change of occupancy include microblading, body-out establishment as a service to the hair salon. The violation is Article sixty-four, section eight, a body-out establishment or microblading is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Samantha Kane and I own this spot on Berkeley Street.
So tell us, how many square feet is this proposal and how many spaces or seats will you have?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, how many square feet is this space and how many seats are, you know, areas for attention will you have?
Upstairs square footage is nine-hundred. We need forty-five square feet for the room to allow microblading, which we have and are looking to build. The issue- Um, the issue is the occupancy. We need to add it to our occupancy because um, apparently it's forbidden in this area of the city. Um.
So tell us, so tell us about your business. So you are a hair salon. You, is this, is this a ground floor hair salon?
Yeah, so this is a street-level hair salon. We've been here for three years. Um, currently, we have a makeup artist and brow specialist. This is Lexi. Uh, and she's currently in training to do microblading, which is oftentimes a salon service uh, or a spa service. But the city basically dictates that as under body art, which is considered tattooing. Um, we're not looking to open a tattoo shop or add actual tattooing of the body. It's strictly for cosmetic and uh salon service reasons, so.
So then you're just uh adding forty-five square feet to the current business?
Correct.
Okay, do you have signage? And what is your signage looking like?
Um, the signage was already approved. Nothing is going to change about the signage. Nothing is going to change about um, the business and how we represent ourselves. We just need the addition of occupancy for body art and approval of the space in order to offer this service.
Okay, um, how are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are fine. No real question except for, I guess, uh, which I know is a challenge. So this is on the lower level. Um, I guess, how, how do you plan to address any accessibility or any, because there's no, assume there's no elevator or no way to get down there. I mean, is that a, a way to manage that in your services?
Yeah, for sure. So, uh, I mean, we are closed Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, so if there happens to be any uh accessibility issues with handicap people, um, that would be a private appointment that they would have in the upstairs space, which is already outfitted perfectly for, um, you know, there's hand washing sink, there's plenty of space, uh, has all the requirements. Um, so if that were to be an issue, we would be able to accommodate.
Okay, no problem, no questions other than that. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Um, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Kim Cruzoli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had a butters meeting held by our office on November sixteenth, where no opposition or comments were given by any abutters. I have received verbal support from the abutters. Um, at this time, I'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Hi, Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor's Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. We heard no concerns or issues from the earliest neighborhood association. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have one letter of opposition.
And is, what's the opposition based on?
They just oppose to the project.
They just oppose. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Calling the next case, calling V O A one two four. On case V O A one two four four two three seven fifty-six Linwood Street. This is a proposed curb cut for one vehicle off-street parking, violations Article fifty, section twenty-nine, usable open spaces insufficient, and Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking. Name and address for the record, please.
George, are you there? Um, good evening, uh, Chairman of the Board. Uh, this is my phone at Fengpo Zero Studio of Architecture, two oh four Adam Street, Dorchester, Mass, zero two one two two.
So tell us what you're, what's being proposed?
I'm just like, I'm one off-street parking.
You know, um, I.
For the single family.
Yeah, you know, that, that street um is according, uh, well, I'll tell you, that street is an uphill street. Um, and it's a tough corner. And also, the B P D A is uh recommending denial because it looks like it's front yard parking. Can you just talk that through a little bit?
Well, um, the um, if you look at the site plan, um, the configuration of the house is a little bit unique because the angles. So if it was a rectangular, that we can't have it park in the right-hand side without any problem. Um, but um, as the curve um, right now, and if you look at the site plan, um, you see Linwood Street. There is the sign is between Linwood and Street that say no parking from tap point to the corner. So the parking, the proposed parking, off-street parking here doesn't take away any off-street, not on-street parking at all.
It might not, but isn't it a blind corner with the, with the s- s- with the curb and everything like that, with the curb and the street?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this. Would you like me to put his comments in for the record?
Please.
Okay, regarding fifty-six Linwood Street, it is front yard parking, curb cut is located at a sharp turn on the corner, and there is parking on the side of the street.
Yes.
Mr. D'Amico's comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, I mean, the plans show exactly what the proponent is recommending. It looks like they are already using it in this form, because there's a makeshift curb, you know, jumper with some wood, and then the driveway is already, appears to be there. So I, I guess they're just trying to legalize this, but I, I agree with Mr. D'Amico. I just think this is a very hard spot to have a car parked.
I think this is a massive accident waiting to happen. Um, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
How are you, Madam Chair? This is Jay Son from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
Wondering who that was. How are you?
I'm good. So an abutters meeting was held on October eighteenth, in which all of the neighbors who were in attendance of the abutters meeting were all abutters, and they all did write letters of support. The board should have that as well. If not, I can make that available. But all the questions and concerns of the neighbors were answered by Mr. Rayner, and there's, there was only support raised for the project. I haven't received any opposition.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And uh, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, um, so um, we have an issue here that where the neighborhood's in support, but on technical grounds, this looks like this would be a very hard thing to support in the long run. And the B P D A um is also in oppos, is in opposition. Um, so may I have a motion, please?
I, I, I just, I think this is just too hard of an intersection, especially with the yard as overgrown as it appears. I, I just, I think this is, we can't allow this to proceed. I, I'm gonna have to sit, make a motion to deny.
And I would have to second that motion.
I to him in support, and I'm sorry, Mr. Fang and the abutter and the applicant, but um, it just really doesn't work. Um, so the motion is for denial.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling V O A one two five nine six eight five twelve Wambaix Street. This is to confirm auctions as a one family and extend living space to the basement and reconfigure the roof line to add living space on the third floor. The violation is Article fif, I'm sorry, and rebuild a rear deck. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-nine, excessive F A R. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the number of allowed habitable stories is going to exceed it. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Vernon Woodworth, the architect, and I reside at nine Elizabeth Street in Mattapan. This is a Victorian home purchased by a blended family with several children uh needing accommodation. The intent is to fit out the basement for uh their own personal use and uh renovate it uh with a second means of egress. The existing deck is unsafe and needs to be replaced, and in the attic where we're intending to make a master suite, uh, in order to mitigate some low headroom, uh, we're adding some dormer area.
Okay, um, and so is this in fact, yes, so you're maintaining it as a single family?
Yes.
Okay, um, it, okay, let's just see. And tell us about the extension of living space into the basement?
The intent is that they have a, uh, one, one of the children is a, is a adult male who would like to live there. Uh, we went back and forth on whether or not to create an additional dwelling unit, and ultimately, the intent is to make it an extension of the single family.
So tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height, the floor-to-sill height, so we can understand how habitable it is?
Yes, uh, seven feet, eight inches, with a few projections that do not go below seven feet. And we will be creating a uh, two, actually, emergency escape and rescue window openings with sill heights less than forty-four inches.
And are they into the side or rear yard? Is there enough space in the side yards for somebody to get out comfortably, should, should the windows be located in the side yard?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair. The uh driveway goes down one side, and there's a significant yard area on the other.
So, um, what is this? I think Zillow is telling me, if it's Zillow, that there are already six bedrooms in there, so this would be seven bedrooms?
Uh, not sure how they came to that uh amount. Uh, one, two, there's only three on the second floor. And they may have counted two on the, in the attic. We're actually reducing that. It's only going to be one now with the master suite. So I don't actually think we are increasing the number.
Okay, um, okay. Let's see. Any questions, Mr. Robinson?
No, I mean, I think unfortunately, it's the same issue we're dealing with. I mean, in terms of the bedroom and the, the grade, it's, I mean, I think the fact that it's, I guess, a single family, maybe it puts a little bit different spin on it, but it's just a similar issue.
And Mr. Woodward, there was no other way at all of accommodating that bedroom on the first floor or elsewhere in the building?
I, I should add that we are taking an existing door and excavating to create a full-height entrance and exit for that basement apartment. So there will be direct egress to grade, but we didn't see another way to carve this out.
Where is that shown? Because that doesn't seem to be shown on the drawings.
We'll need the rear elevation.
Might just be a slip of the tongue, Mr. Woodward, but that is not a separate uh unit in the basement. It's not a separate apartment.
No.
No kitchen.
Here, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, this elevation shows the partial door. The excavation uh would bring it to a full. There's actually an interior set of steps currently, but you do have to duck your head to get in there, and we're gonna make that full height with a uh, change to the exterior elevation.
And Mr. Robinson, can I confirm that there are no, there is no kitchen in the basement?
I don't see anything shown. There shows a workout room and a living room. It does not show uh any additional uh, expense associated with that use. Yes.
Um, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jay Son Gant with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had an abutters meeting held on November seventeenth, in which they answered all questions that were raised at that meeting. They had an additional meeting with the Garrison Charter Neighborhood Association at their monthly meeting, in which they did get the support of the Garrison Charter Housing Committee, and the support letter should have been sent into the board, and I can make that available as well. We are going to be deferring to the board's decision for this proposal.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, uh, let's just see. Okay, um. So this is um in a, in a historic district according to the B P D A. Um, okay, and so no building code relief to be granted. So may I have a motion, please?
Yep, yep. I, I, I'll make a motion to approve with a B P D A design review, um, looking at the dormer and, and sort of as, as they've noted, as well as, um, I think if we can look at ensuring that we, uh, the windows are as large as they can be to provide the natural light and egress for that bedroom. Um, and I think no building code relief is as well.
About basement windows, I just want to make sure that our instruction to the B P D A.
Yeah.
As, okay.
Basically, basically.
Second that.
And no building code relief. Okay, I.
And no building code relief, correct, yep.
I to him in support, so the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling V O A one two six eight three one six twenty-one Sagamore Street. This is a tandem-style driveway installed on the side of the house located at twenty-one twenty-three Sagamore. This driveway is on twenty-three Sagamore Street. Violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam, or good after, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Barry on behalf of the family that owns the residence, uh, the Sabatas family. Um, Madam Chair and members of the board, this is a, a proposal to install, uh, as just stated into the record, a tandem-style driveway. When the family bought this address, it was already subdivided into two lots. Uh, in trying to find a way to park off the street, the family now is grown. They have two young kids. This was where uh he worked with the engineering team to try to locate a place to place the driveway. Unfortunately, looking at the plans, there's only seven feet to the right of his existing house and five feet to the left. So where this is being proposed, uh, really is what makes the most sense. A lot of people during the abutters meeting and at the community meeting said that, um, some of the green space that is there, they would like it to ideally stay in place. And this, where this is actually being placed is in order to try to uh ensure that that does in fact stay.
Was this proposal or this address before this board in the past?
Not that I'm aware of, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I certainly have never represent, represented this owner on this property.
Okay, and there is some reference to a tree?
Yes, so during the community meetings, uh, there's, there was this discussion that there's a tree that's located right in the center of twenty-one Sagamore Street. Uh, several of the abutters said that if possible, they would like that tree to remain. It's been there for a number of years. So where this driveway is being placed, we'll ensure that that stays where it is.
And.
Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this. Would you like me to put his comments in, please?
Yes, please.
Okay, regarding twenty-one twenty-three Sagamore Street, parking area cannot accommodate two spaces. It is front yard parking. That's Mr. D'Amico of B T D.
Okay, and uh, can you tell me, uh, um, counselor, you, did you say this is a one family?
It is a single family that's located on the twenty-three Sagamore lot. So if you're looking at the plans, Madam Chair, it's the home that's directly to the right of where the driveway is proposed. Um, and, and to address the comment from Mr. D'Amico, uh, we understand that there, the width of this driveway will not be illegal parking for two cars, but the family does, it's just a single-family house. It's just the owner and his wife that will be parking tandem-style in the driveway.
Has, have they thought about combining the lots at some point?
I did not have that discussion with them throughout this process.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the plans are good. I, yeah, I live at the end of the street, so I'm looking at it right now. I know exactly where this is. I've, uh, been here for twenty-one years. I, I know this property very well, and I, I, I understand, I understand the comments on the green space. Um, but I think that this is, to me, it's, it seems like a, a fair ask. I think it'd be great if we could, you know, use permeable pavers in there and sort of manage the sort of aesthetics of this, but um, I think this is an adequate approach. And, and I guess the question on Mr. D'Amico, I mean, if we go in a little deeper, is that gonna take it out of the front yard? Because it seems close.
Mr. Robinson, don't worry. We can take care of that if, if there, if, if in concept, the plan makes sense. Okay?
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Twin with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a butters meeting um on December first, twenty twenty-one. A butters had concerns regarding the green space and maintenance of the tree, which the applicant promised to maintain. The community was in agreement, and the Columbia Seven Hills Civic Association's planning committee voted unanimously to support the project. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, um, so. So let's, um, I'm, I'm just jumping ahead. So let's uh get a motion out there. So let's uh, get a motion out there, uh, Mr. Robinson?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, and I, I guess if, if needed to extend the driveway a little bit deeper.
So can we do it for design review with the specifics?
Good point, yep. Design review, with design review.
Longer driveway and you said permeable?
Pavers.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'd support that as well.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-two-four-five-five-six-two-nineteen to two-twenty-one Fairmont Avenue. This is to replace wooden fence, place rear decking and railing, place stairs, decking and railings on the second floor. Violation Article sixty-nine, sixty-nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eileen Rosa. I'm the architectural designer from Rosa Design and Construction, Seventy Warren Street, Suite Seven, Roxbury, Massachusetts. Uh, Boston, Massachusetts. It's, um, I'm representing the owner Carlos Arias. And this particular case, uh, for the approval of this, um, pre-existing uh, rear deck. Um, looking at the plans, uh, NAS build, uh, set of drawings of a ten by fifteen deck built on two by twelve joists at sixteen on center.
So let me just, um, uh, Ms. Ms. Rosa, look, can you tell me, please? Um, so this is ten by fifteen, it's a two-family dwelling. Um, can you tell me what the rear yard is from the edge of the deck to the property line?
Yes, if we scroll down to the plot plan, it's uh, the last page. And I will provide a reference here. Um, so you can see the, yeah, right there if you can scroll up a little bit. Um, yeah, looking at the rear, uh, the closest part of the existing dwelling is seventeen-seven. We don't have a specific dimension here, but I, I took a quick measurement, uh, taking for reference the seventeen point seven. And the, the point on the staircase, it's about seventy, uh, twenty-three feet, one inch. And to the deck is thirty-six inch, thirty, sorry, thirty-six feet, one inch. Uh, and the regulation there calls for forty feet.
Okay, and the, and so these, so are you proposing just one deck or two decks?
It's, it's a, it's, it's a NAS build, uh, what we're presenting, the, the deck is already built. And it's, it, and it's just that rear deck, the one shown in the plot plan.
I'm assuming that, that when you're referring to replacing the fence, it, you're, it's going to be a six-foot fence?
Correct.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, plans are good, no questions from me.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant, Ms. Carla, notified the Butters, and a community meeting was hosted by our office and was conducted on September thirtieth. During this meeting, no Butters were present at the time, or excuse me, no Butters that were present at the time of the meeting were in opposition of this proposal. Nor has our office received any letters of opposition or support for this proposal. Um, at this time, we'd just like to defer judgment to the board. No further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Um, I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-four-zero-five-zero-three-forty-seven Font Road. This is adding dormers to an existing second floor and adding full bathroom, renovate the first floor bathroom and kitchen. Violations Article sixty, section forty-one, rear yard of certain shallow lots. Name and address for the record, please.
Nice to see you on full, full screen, Mr. um, Fortune? Is the applicant here for form? Oh, can you please put your name and address on the record?
Um, Valerie and Al Copeland.
Forty-seven Font Road, matter of fact, oh-two-one-two-six.
Okay, so is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
This is one.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry, this is Glenn. I was trying to get in. I'm the architect. Hello?
Oh, yes. Put your name and address on the record, please.
Yep, it's Glenn Knowles. I live at nine Menadnock Street, Dorchester, Mass, oh-two-one-two-five.
Okay.
Um, sorry about the video hiccup there. So, uh, you, you just very, very briefly met the, the owners, but the proposal is for three small gabled dormers on the front of the house and one shed dormer along the rear. It's a, a very small house. Uh, there's, it's a small oddly shaped lot. There's absolutely nowhere to enlarge the house from the footprint. So we'd like to increase the second floor, uh, living area.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions, uh, from me. Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Uh, yes. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dante Peoples here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board for your judgment. Um, the applicant came before the West Selden and Vicinity Neighborhood Association on October twenty-fifth and November twenty-second, where there was, uh, where questions, concerns were, um, raised, uh, no more raised, um, the, the group, um. There was support shown, um, and there was also in a Butters meeting held on November tenth, run by, um, the Mayor's Office on November tenth, twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Um, the Mayor's Office has, we haven't received any, uh, letters of opposition. We have received letters of support that should be, that should have been sent to the board. If not, I can, um, again, make those available. It's not a problem. Um, again, we would like to defer to the board for your judgment at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ambassador?
Um, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I don't care, sorry. We do have three letters of support, my, sorry about that, Mr. Robinson.
Nope, all good. I, want, wanna hear that. That's good news. Um, I, I, I make a motion to approve. Um, I know the BPAD review proviso, I think it's pretty straightforward and it's consistent with sort of other aspects. I think they, we can just approve this.
I'd second, I'd second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-five-eight-one-eight-nine-thirty Prescott Street. This is interior renovations, new windows, new doors and new deck. Violation Article nine, section one, reconstruction, extension of a non-conforming building and Article sixty-nine, sixty-nine, insufficient rear yard. Name and address for the record.
Hi there, this is Kelly and John Avila, thirty Prescott Street. We are here looking to do a few renovations in our two-family owner-occupied home. The first is we're looking to renovate our third floor to be used as three bedrooms and that eventually a bathroom for our family of four. Our unit currently only has one bedroom and we've really outgrown it. The second project is we're looking to make a deck off the side backyard of our home. The deck is to be used for recreational purposes for our family. It's just on the second floor. And it, in addition, it will give us a second back egress because the nineteen-ten house has a pretty steep back stairwell. So we'll be using that back deck as our second egress.
So let me just, uh, understand. So the deck you're proposing is a second-floor deck. It's not a ground-floor deck?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, and, um, what's the distance from the edge? Let's just see. Insufficient rear yard. So what's the distance from the, the furthest edge of the deck to the rear property line?
Um, I don't have that information, Madam Chair.
Okay.
More than twenty, was more than twenty feet.
I think it's shown if, uh, on the Madam Ambassador, I think it's thirty-two feet, six inches. And then it looks like it's not quite parallel and it's almost forty at the feet at the left-hand side.
Okay, so, um, there, it must be a forty-foot rear yard.
I think it's a forty-foot rear yard and it's encroaching a little bit into that.
Okay, is, how are the plans?
The plans are fine, th- no questions. It's, uh, again, pretty straightforward.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants completed the community process and they notified a Butters, and a community meeting was held by our office, which was on November sixteenth. Um, Noah Butters were in attendance at this meeting. Our office has received, um, no letters of support or opposition for this po- proposal, and at this time, we'd like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may, uh, let's just see, what is the BPDA proposing?
They wanna see it.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve, and I think since it's a second-floor deck, it's, it's a little odd. I think it'd be, I think it'd be good just to have them take a look, so I'll do approval with BPDA Design Review on that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I two him in support, so you guys are all set. Good luck. You're set with that one proviso of design review.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-three-eight-three-nine-one-eighty-three Chittick Road. This is to construct a thirteen-by-sixteen ground-level deck at the rear of the existing two-family. Violation Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please. You gotta unmute yourself, sir. Still muted.
Ms. Ambassador, could you help him, please? Ah, her?
Yeah, um, let me see. Uh, Greg, yeah, you're, you're, you're muted now. Can you hear me? Can you hear us? He just unmuted yourself. You wanna try it again? All right, you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. He's sending me a
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you now.
I don't know what happened. All right, Gregory Diaz, fifty-three Fondelle Road, representing the owner. Good evening, Madam Chair and the board.
Yes, please tell us what is being proposed.
So the homeowner would like to add a deck to his uh, property. He lives on the property, he lives on the first floor, and he would like to add a deck to the rear of the property that, um, that exit the back door out of his kitchen, just to have a, an additional, you know, um, sitting, uh, area in the back.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions, very straightforward.
So this, um, is a two-family dwelling. I'm assuming that the second unit is on the second and third floor?
Correct.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Danielle Fonseca, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants completed the community process and they notified a Butters, and a community meeting was held by our office on October twelfth for this. Noah Butters were in attendance at this meeting. We have received no letters of support or opposition for this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board for judgment, and we have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-six-four-nine-seven-two-eighty-eight Leland Road. This is to install an accessible vertical lift with roof, a six-by-six attached to the side of the house. Violation Article fifty-six, section, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
First of all, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Jim Ryan. I live at eighty-eight Leland Road with my wife. And we would like to have the accessibility to get into the house. Unfortunately, we're getting older, so that would really help us.
I'm right behind you. So tell us, tell us where this, uh, this lift is proposed.
It'll be up on the side of the house, mostly towards the back. And
Okay.
My neighbor sent the letter and he didn't have a problem with anything.
Okay, so will you be putting a door in there, or is there an existing door already?
There'll be a door going in the basement. So we can drive in. Uh, we need the wheelchair to get onto the elevator.
Okay. Okay.
And it'll go up.
Okay, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, uh, very straightforward, no, no, no issue. It's, I mean, I, I understand where he's trying to get to, so I think it makes some sense where it is setback from the edge. No questions.
Got it. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Uh, some background information, eighty-eight Leland went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on December fourteenth and received support votes of eight to nothing. Uh, no concerns were raised from neighbors either to our office. Thank you.
Uh, we do have one letter of support, um, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I have no raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, um, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-two-four-eight-zero-six-seventy-three Doolberg Street. This is to construct a single-story addition and renovate. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Hernandez, one-eleven Baker Street, West Roxbury. As, uh, you stated, the proposal is to construct a single-story addition on the, uh, back of the house. Uh, right now, there's an existing a bump-out, um, uh, uh, the back of the house with an existing deck. Uh, the, uh, proposal is to remove that deck and, uh, increase or extend the back of the house to meet the, the back of the existing single-story addition, so it would be a single-story uh, structure that we would be constructing. The, uh, current existing rear setback is twenty-point-eight feet. Uh, the proposed setback is twenty-eight-point-three feet. And the, uh, required is forty feet. Um, we're adding eighty-six square feet of, uh, living area, but, uh, we meet the, uh, requirements for the FAR.
So you have eighty-six square feet, and will you be replacing that deck?
Uh, right, we're, uh, limit, well, we're, we're not replacing it, we're simply removing the deck and we're creating a, um, a side entrance into the, uh, house. Uh, it's, uh, would enter into a mudroom. Uh, the proposed additional expansion is to, uh, in, increase the size of the kitchen, which is currently very small and not functional.
So I live up the street, um, so is this the house that's already under, being renovated?
Uh, yes, yeah, there's, uh, some interior, uh, work being done on the house. Um, originally, the application had gone in um, to the building department, and, uh, the contractor was notified, uh, through email, but uh, he had assumed that the notification was approval of the project, um, and, uh, started to do some interior work, uh, when it, he went to
Got it, got it. I've been checking out the construction in progress, not knowing that you were coming before us, but that's good to know. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are, are good, no questions from me.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Background information on the community process, um, Butters were fliered, uh, and there wasn't a Butters meeting held, or one of the attendees slash director Butters indicated their full support for the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Um, I, I will make a motion to, I think it can just be approved. It's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'd second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-five-three-zero-eight-two-twenty-one Wallworth Street. This is extension of living space at the rear of the single-family dwelling and front porch. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section twenty-eight. This is design review. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section nine, usable open spaces insufficient. Article Article sixty-seven, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Eileen Rosa. I'm the architectural designer from Rosa Design and Construction. Uh, they, um, representing the owner, Mrs. Anna Reese. Uh, the intention here is to extend her living space, uh, in this single-family dwelling. Um, the addition is intended to be, uh, in the back of the house, uh, men, um, and maintain the existing, um-
Sorry, remember, uh, can you tell us which, um, plan we should be looking at by number, so we can understand what the-
If you can scroll down to, um, sheet A one-point-zero, that's, uh, the proposed, uh, floor plan. Not sure if the plot plan is, and, probably in the back or the front, I couldn't see it. There. Yeah, that, that's, yeah, th- those are the proposed, uh, floor plans. So, um, the, uh, uh, the, the, the addition is going to be in the back where, uh, we have these, uh, either crawl or slalom grade addition. Uh, it's a twenty-four-by-fourteen addition to extend the kitchen dining room area and, uh, the bedroom, uh, on the second floor. Um, the addition will be of approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet per floor. Um, and in the roof, uh, we have the intention of, uh, adding a dormer on the right side to maintain the language on both sides, uh, of the roof. Um, and again, in regards to the setbacks, it's in the same one.
Is this still proposed to be a single-family dwelling?
Correct.
Okay, um, let me, let me ask you a couple of other questions. Um, the rear yard, what is required in the rear yard, and what are you proposing?
The requirement is forty feet, the existing was thirty-seven-point-nine, and we're proposing twenty-three-point-nine.
And you're proposing twenty-three-point-nine, okay? Um, okay, so you're proposing altogether, between the first floor and the second floor, about three, six-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet, and what's the proposed size of the dormer?
The size of the dormer will be basically the same size of the roof. It comes all the way from front to back. And to give him a exact dimension, it's about, um, let me see, I have it right here, it's about forty-five feet deep. It's an A-frame roof, um, if you look at the front elevation. And it will just go all the way from front to back. Uh, it's, it's basically mimicking the, the existing, uh, left dormer.
Okay. Um, you know, I happen to be driving by the place, I don't live that far away, when that, um, um, garage was, was enclosed. It was enclosed over a weekend. I have to admire the speed that it was done with. But I also know that there is a childcare, um, that's being run out of the basement. Is that childcare, um, been, is that? Because, um, I just need to understand that that childcare has been approved by this board? Or if it went in, um, if it just went in?
All right, uh, my understanding is that Mrs. Reese, uh, he's been having this, uh, childcare for many years now, and she went through the whole process for the approval, and-
She might have gotten through the state, but she might not have come in, um, through this board because, you know, there's, and issues with drop-off and pickup and things like that because Walworth is a fairly busy street. Um, you know, so we, we just, when a project comes before us, we just need to make sure that, um, we understand it in its totality.
Understand, yeah.
Okay.
Showing the, uh, the family childcare in our basement floor plan as well. Which, by the way, we're proposing a, um, in order to improve, um, the means of egresses for safety reasons, uh, we're proposing two, uh, window wells and an additional, um, egress, uh, towards the exterior. If you scroll up, you'll be able to see it, um-
Tell us exactly what sheet you-
A one-point-zero. Yep, that one right there, on the left, that's the, um, basement, uh, floor plan.
Okay.
And, um, basically, it's just adding those two window wells in the back, just in case of emergency. Right now, it's, it's, it's not there, and that additional means of egress on the right side of the dwelling.
Okay, um. How are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
The, the plans are fine. I, I, I guess I had some similar questions, just about, not as much about the addition on the second floor and the third floor, I think that's probably generally fine. It was, it was about the lower level childcare and, um, are those bedrooms? Is that, is that, are they naprooms? Is the whole lower level the childcare area, or those?
The whole lower level is the childcare area.
Okay.
But there are no bedrooms down there.
Are you comfortable, Mr. Robinson, with the dormers? Because, you know-
I think the dormers are, I understand, and I think the, the matching of the, the left-hand side has the full-length dormer. I think the right-hand side, I mean, I think the BPDA, I think, should look at it a little closer to make sure it's consistent or see if there's a, maybe a way to break it up, but I'm generally okay with it. I think more just to wanna figure out if we, do we need to confirm the lower level, you know, is a legal use or something? I don't know.
Yeah, it just kinda needs to be advertised.
Madam Chair, Tom, Tom looked it up, he's gonna just let you guys know.
Madam Chair, the legal occupancy record of this property is a single-family with an accessory daycare use.
Okay, that's good, okay.
No, no other questions from me, unless you have some for me, Madam Chair.
No, I think I'm good. Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office conducted a Butters meeting for this proposal. At the meeting, there was a mix of opinions expressed. Our office has received both support and opposition letters from direct to Butters. I believe the board should have access to those. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, um, we do have six letters of opposition and one letter of non-opposition from the Longfellow Neighborhood Board.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Um, no, I, I, I do recognize some names, so I think Liz Salik is here.
Excuse me one moment, I have my hand raised since the twenty-one Walworth was brought up, but I'm not sure if the function is working correctly.
Well, we can hear you clearly, so why don't you put your name and address on the record and tell us what, uh, what your, your thoughts are about this?
Okay, uh, my name is Alita Aska. My husband and I, David Chen and I, live at nine-forty-two South Street. We are direct of Butters to twenty-one Walworth. The back of our yard, it goes right along the left side of, the right side of their property, as you face it from the street. So thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for, uh, acknowledging me. Uh, we would like to voice, voice our strong opposition to this proposed alteration. Uh, our property and our life here would be directly and significantly affected, uh, by this project. The main points are several. One, the building permit application has already been refused on six separate violations. Uh, we have concerns about, um, the fire risk posed by, uh, further decreasing the size, the, the distance between the property, uh, building on the other side and also, um, the, our, our property. Uh, about twenty years ago, there was a big fire in that house, and we almost lost our house, too. And I'm really reluctant to see further, uh, movement out from the side of the house that would make it closer to ours. Um, it would significantly and permanently alter how we use our yard and compromise our quality of life, uh, because it would change the amount of sunlight we get, uh, for our garden and things like that.
So if I, if I might summarize, your concern is, is just, maybe, if I could put it right, the density of it by it getting bigger? Any other concerns?
Exactly, I'm concerned about the size of the house being too big for the available lot, and it's not in keeping with the other homes in the neighborhood.
I mean, I, I too have concerns about the children and the childcare,
but wonder about the ultimate use of the basement when there is a kitchen and a bathroom and a laundry facility, et cetera, down there. And if that were to be an apartment, then the backyard would need to be even bigger, not smaller. And I see no hardship in the current living situation there. We've been neighbors with them for twenty years, at least, and we see no hardship there. So we respectfully ask that you deny issuing variances for this proposed alteration, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Madam Chair, I, I also want to bring up, uh, to your attention that there was also a meeting with the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association, and we received a letter of approval. We went through, uh, and we also received nine letters of approval for this project with, uh, with the Butters.
Okay, um, anybody else to speak on this? Um, can you, um, Ms. Ambassador, only because I recognize the name, can you put in Liz Salik?
Liz, Liz Salik? Is she on as a pimp?
No, she's on the side, on the list of participants. I don't know what she, if, I don't even know if she wants to speak, but-
Okay, let me go, okay, I see your name, okay. Um, I sent a request to unmute you, Liz, please let me know if you'd like to speak.
I just unmuted myself. No, I'm not here to speak, I submitted a, a written, um, comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, I see, uh, we have a raised hand by Lucy. Um, let me just see, Lucy, were you looking to give testimony here? I just unmuted you. Hi, Lucy, can you hear us? I know you're on twice, um, I sent a request to unmute you on both platforms. It might be all set. Yeah, I might be having issues with Lucy, uh, but I have no additional raised hands here.
Okay.
I would like to speak.
Uh, who is that, and please put your name and address on the record.
My name is Pauline Young, I live at nine-three-one South Street. Um, my concern is that, in this particular neighborhood, there's, there's space between each home. There's land that each home has. To me, if those extensions are given to the twenty-one Walworth, it will be the only property in this whole neighborhood that would not fit into the space that everybody else has. It feels totally out of, um, uh, being appropriate for this neighborhood, and I too have concerns. But I have concerns about the daycare, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We know that the daycare is regulated by the Commonwealth, um, so we will trust on their judgment. Um, okay, so-
Madam Chair, sorry, I, I just wanted to add one more thing to, to, so we are on the same page. Um, um, and it's that the fact that this lot is, uh, comparing with the others around is a smaller lot. Um, and the intention here for Mrs. Anna's really seems to extend her living space. Right now, she only has about, uh, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet for her, uh, home, and she just wants, she just needs to add more space there to have a, um, a better space for her family, as she's willing to. This is basically her long-term, uh, residence.
Um, so, um, how many bedrooms is she going to?
Uh, it, it, you're going to keep the same amount of bedrooms, uh, it's just adding a master bedroom with a master bathroom and a walk-in closet.
How many in total?
Uh, it's a total of three.
Okay. Okay, so given all that information, um, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, uh, I mean, I think, I, I will make a motion to approve. Um, I think, uh, the BPDA, uh, can do a design proviso on, uh, assessing the, the size and scale of the dormer specifically, uh, regards to the Butters' concern in terms of light. Um, so I think they could look at potentially pulling that back and, um, creating a little bit more relief, uh, to the rear of Butters.
I would agree with you, Mr. Robinson, I'd second that.
Yes, I too am in support, so it's approval with design review because I drive by, that building is down the street from me, and I do understand that that side dormer will probably have the greatest impact on, um, on the, on the building and on the Butters.
Understood.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so you're all set with that proviso?
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-six-four-three-one-one-six to six-eight Mendham Street. This is to construct a third-floor vertical addition to an existing two-family. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is John Freeman, I'm the architect, and this is my own house, so, uh, my address is six Mendham Street. Uh, it's a two-family, uh, townhouse style, and the other side is owned by David Dangler, who is also here with me tonight. Uh, we are, uh, on our FAR, we're about two-hundred square feet over in proposing this, and, uh, the existing house is eight inches over the setback, so the setback violation is simply an extension of the non-conformance.
Can we take a step back, please?
Yes, sure.
Tell us exactly what you're proposing to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, what we're proposing, well, if you could switch, go to this, uh, second to last page, I think that's the clearest indication. We're adding, as I said, a, a third floor. And one more. Yeah, so, uh, I guess you can't see the whole page, go down to the bottom then of that page, so stop right there. So you can see, uh, the, the, uh, data line of the, the white stripe that's in the, is the current height, and we're essentially lifting the roof up five and a half feet to create a third story. Uh, we're aligning the ridge with the house on the left approximately, and the eve with the house on the right, so that it fits into the neighborhood. Uh, because this is townhouse style, we're adding the third floor to each unit, but the units don't connect, the party wall will go through.
Okay, and so essentially, that takes response to the side. How about, so this is an existing side yard violation, and again, please tell me about the FAR?
Uh, the FAR, by adding the third floor, we're gonna be two-hundred square feet, uh, less than two-hundred, a hundred-and-ninety-something over the FAR. Um, and, uh, and, but it didn't seem to make sense to pull back from the perimeter of the house. And then the, the height violation is not vertical dimension, but rather that it's more than two and a half stories.
Three stories, got it. So hold on a minute, uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, plans are good, I think the proposed addition is consistent with the street. I, I, I don't have any, uh, issues with the, the proposal.
Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. The Butters' meeting was held, uh, which was not well-attended. Our office has not received any letters of support or opposition, and we understand that the applicant has met with the local civic association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have one support letter.
Thank you.
We had four Butters at our Butters meeting.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition? Anybody else? Ms. Ambassador? Um, Tom, did we lose Ms. Ambassador?
She's still here, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I have, um, no raised hands at the moment, thank you.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with, uh, BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one-two-six-four-four-two-one-six Bel Air Road. This is a finish in the attic, include a bedroom, full bath, family room, three storage closets. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Airphone and Marika Ali by six Bel Air Road, West Roxbury.
Tell us what's being proposed. Tell us what's being proposed.
Um, so we, this is our home, we've lived here three-and-a-half years, there's a walk-up attic, um, it, with a complete stairwell going up, it's a big, beautiful, open space. Um, and we're just looking to finish it off, um, adding a guest room and an area, uh, play area for our two young girls. Um, and as they get older, maybe, you know, they'll use it as a study area. So there'll be no changes to the existing footprint. Um, all the work will be done internally.
So tell us about the floor to ceiling height, because it looks like you're okay, so tell us about the floor to ceiling height, that.
Um, it's, it's a full, full height, so I think there's ten feet in there, so we would just ha- match it to the rest of the ceilings in our house. Um, it's completely, um, finished and.
And you have, and you're using some of the space in the knee walls, then?
Uh, nothing below five feet, so.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, um, very straightforward, no questions.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on December fourteenth. Received a support vote of eight to zero. Uh, six letters of support were also sent in from Director Butters to our office, and I believe we've made those available. At this time, we'll defer to the Board. Thank you.
Yeah, they're on the way. I'll call you back.
Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Yeah, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let me confirm, that's the end, uh, end of the agenda, right?
I'm correct, Madam Chair, you win the prize.
Okay, meeting is now adjourned. See, uh, Board members on Tuesday.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
You're safe.